I will call the meeting to order tonight on a great workshop agenda. We have a presentation, 2018-19 Audit Finding, EF RP Group. John, would you like to take the center stage?
Yeah, John Gosselow, Director, EF RP, independent financial auditors for the Village. You should have the financial statements or reports to the board and the management letter. Not going to go through it page by page, so you should have a summary. Professional standards require us to communicate to matters related to the audit that we deem relevant and significant to you, to the boards overseeing the financial reporting process. On April 12th, 2018, we communicated our audit plan, outlining our plan, our audit plan for the Village for the year ended, as of and for the year ended May 31st, 2019. The rest just goes on, introductory stuff. So if we go to page three, we substantially completed our audit, the financial statements, then as of and for the year ended May 31st, 2019. Our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, standards applicable to financial audits containing government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller of the United States. The audit of the financial statements does not relieve management or the board of their government's responsibilities. The objective of our audit was to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance, about whether the financial statements are free from material weaknesses, the statements. The scope of the work at one was substantially the same as described to you in our earlier audit planning communications. We expect to issue an unmodified or clean opinion, that's the best opinion you can get. All records and information requested by EF RP were freely available for inspection. Management's cooperation was excellent. We received full access to all information requested and full cooperation extended to us by management. Some of the open items, review and approval by the Board of Trustees of the financial statements, performs a few subsequent event procedures, and then seek management's signature on a management representation letter. Accounting practices, policies, and estimates. The Village has to, has some significant estimates in order to produce the financial statements. The accounting practices and policies are those included in Note 1 to the financial statements. They are appropriate, comply with general accepted accounting principles and industry practice, consistently applied, and adequately described as noted within Note 1. And we go down to significant accounting estimates, that would be like your useful eyes of capital assets, accounting for pensions, that's your ERS, PFRS, and LOSESAP, compensated expenses, and other post-employment benefits obligation. Management did not make any significant changes to the processes or significant assumptions used to develop this significant accounting estimates during the year ended, I should say, May 31st, 2019, not 18. The methods used to account for significant transactions and related disclosures are, were considered appropriate. And then we go on to describe some significant disclosures that might be, might be significant to financial statement users, that's within Note 2. We have long-term liabilities, the pension plans, the volunteer firefighter length of service award, that's your LOSESAP, and other post-employment benefits. And then Note 3, commitments and contingencies. There were no material corrected misstatements related to accounts or disclosures brought to attention of management, and there were no uncorrected misstatements other than trivial related to accounts or disclosures that were presented. The information you're receiving, that we received and that you received appears to be accurate as the way you're receiving it. Internal control over financial reporting on page five. Plan for forming our audit, we consider the Village's internal control over financial reporting as a basis for determining our audit procedures for the purpose of expressing an opinion on their respective financial statements, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the Village's internal control. Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the Village's internal control. As part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material statement, we performed various tests of its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, et cetera, that could have directed a material effect on determination of financial statement amounts. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit, and accordingly, we did not express an opinion. But we do say the results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported. Our consideration of internal control is for the limited purpose described above and was not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control, more significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We are required to communicate in writing to those charged with governance all material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that have been identified in the Village's internal control or financial reporting. And it goes on to describe the various definitions. We are happy to say, you know, there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to be reported. For the required communications, there's no significant changes to our planned audit strategy, no matters noted relevant to the audits regarding violations of laws, regulations, et cetera, that we came across. We're not aware that management has consulted with other auditors or opinion shopping. There's no disagreements with management or significant difficulties during the audit. There are no other matters that we consider significant to the oversight of the Village's financial reporting process that we have not previously communicated. Again, we will be asking for a management rep letter after the financials have been approved. On page seven, these are some of the upcoming pronouncements under GAZB. Most of them do not comply. There might be something with leases depending on the materiality, but it won't be a major change to what you've already been saying. It's not like when we implemented the other post-employment benefits or anything. Then the last page, our engagement letter describes our responsibilities, again, according to professional standards, just letting you know that, you know, we are independent of the Village. And then you should have a analytic, this is comparing current year numbers to last year's numbers at a broad level. First page is the statement of net position. This is your government-wide full accrual, which brings in all your long-term assets and liabilities. So I added some comments for some of the larger changes. Your state and federal receivable this year decreased. That was mainly because last year there was some remaining receivables for the Main Street project and FEMA. Capital assets not being depreciated went down. There was some construction in progress related to Pump Street Station, which had, which was reclassed to capital assets being depreciated. And then for capital assets being depreciated, you have the 149 for, that was reclassed. There's another 307,000 of additional assets, and then less 420,000 in current year depreciation. Your deferred outflows of resources, that's your pensions, ERS, PFRS, and LOSESAP. That's reported to the Village by New York State and the third-party administrator of LOSESAP. Counts payable, that's strictly timing. Bond anticipation notes that increased, there was a ESC clean water bond for about 443,000, less 133,000 that was paid on your ban renewals. Other post-employment benefit liability, this increase of 700,000, that's actuarially determined as described in footnote 2B7. Net pension liabilities proportionate share, that's ERS and PFRS. That's reported to the Village by New York State, again, described in footnote 2. Then net pension liability, LOSESAP, reported to the Village by third-party administrator. Again, deferred inflows of resources, that's pensions and LOSESAP recorded by New York State and third-party administrator. Net investment capital assets, current year additions, net combined with current year debt payments. And then your unrestricted deficit is residual of all other items on this page. You can see the deficit is directly related to having to record that other post-employment benefits liability. Without that, you would be showing about a 1.5 million unrestricted, but you're required to have that liability in there. Page two, that's your, again, your government-wide full accrual, statement of activities. Your capital grants went up this year. You have some clean water from EFC and some federal aid for sidewalks and streetlights. Then the other large change was in the net investment in your length of service award program. That decreased by about 142, that's reported to you by Penflex. Under general support, your expenses generally went up because of OPEB, that $700,000 increase you saw on the prior page. Again, same with transportation and home and community services, the largest piece was that swing in the actuarially determined liability. Page three, this is a comparison of the general fund only, just what most people are concerned about. The due from other funds, there's a shift there, but that's, that's a timing difference that goes up and down every year. State and federal aids receivable, again, that was prior to your Main Street project receivables, and then that's why it decreased. Counts payable was a timing difference, everything else is fairly consistent. Then the assigned fund balance, that's the amount appropriate for the next year's budget, so the swing there was the budgeted amount. And then page four, your, again, the general fund revenues and expenditures. Everything is fairly consistent. Your federal aid, you know, went up, that was again related to sidewalk money. General support, there was some building repairs and the expenditures. Community services, there's urban forestry. Then employee benefits, there was a decrease in the amounts required overall for the ERS, PFRS, and LOSESAP. And at the end, your overall change in fund balance, you went up about 170, well, you went up 177,566. So you're almost up to a million dollars in fund balance. Are there any questions, concerns, comments?
Is this kind of where you projected us with the fund balance? That seems even more than-
The fund balance, it's 970, but you had to take out 200,000 because that's what we've appropriated for this year for all the municipal building repairs. So you're in the sevens then, which I thought we were going to be at, you know, high sixes or seven, and we came in a little better. So if you take out the 200, you're at 770.
Right, it still seems more than we anticipated, I think.
Yeah, I think we had, we also had projects that I thought were going to be paid last fiscal year that were not. The roof on this building, some of the website stuff, some of the computer upgrades were paid last year, but not all of them. So I don't know the exact dollar amount, but there was at least, right there, at least 30,000 that was not spent last year. It's coming out of this year's budget from the fund balance. Went in and it's just going to come back out in the next year.
Yeah. Is there anything else, Michelle, on the process that came up that you weren't aware of or kind of surprised you or anything with numbers or anything?
No, I don't think so. I think, which I was going to say in my financial report, the next meeting in December, I want to talk more about where we stand six months in, six months to go like that. But during the audit, I don't think so. I do think we finished better though than I was anticipating.
Anything else from, anyone on the board?
Okay.
Thank you, John.
You guys have my business card. I'm available all year round. Our fee isn't, our fee's all-inclusive, so any calls on that, there's no extra billings, things like that, so in case you feel like calling or whatnot.
Thank you, John. Thanks very much. Have a good holiday, John.
So the approval for the report by the Village, when is that?
It's, I don't know, I don't think it's a resolution, I think it's just a vote.
It's just a vote.
A roll call vote. We can do it tonight if you're comfortable, or we can put this to a later meeting.
I just ask you now, I don't come from where we do it. I just wanted to know, yeah, maybe we would be doing it.
Trying to do more things by resolution is a good way to, I don't know, probably do by resolution.
Okay, yeah, we can wait. I just wanted to, when we're doing it, since it was mentioned.
Yeah, okay. So then on the next meeting, on Tuesday, next Tuesday, there'll be a resolution.
Nice work, Michelle.
Jeff, thank you for your time, uh, also.
You were gone, I had your backpack left, that was great.
Does the board have any other informal questions, formal questions about FASD? Anything else before we wrap it up?
I had one question for Michelle on the financial report. We should have funded the line item in the water fund. I don't think I've seen before, but she explained where the money comes from.
So when the water fund miscellaneous revenues is at like 4,700, which is a lot, part of it, we did a repair several, maybe about 18 months, two years ago, that was never paid. So we put it on the water bill instead of sending letters and they instantly paid it. So that was like 1,500 there. Every time someone starts up water service at Butterfield, it's 200. And with the housing market, there's been over 30 final readings this year alone, and they're $50 each. So all that together comes, and a bounce check fee here and there comes up to 4,700. Wait. Are there questions about October? So for the December meeting will be financials through November. I started working on them, trying to do projections through the end of the year to see where we're going to be, what we need to spend on. So if the board has any projects that they think need to happen that weren't originally budgeted for, or projects that, you know, they just want to think about, I think we should think about them now and then talk about them next meeting, see if we have money for it. And then, you know, see where we're standing with that 200,000 allocated. We've been doing work to the firehouse, we've been doing a little work, we did the work here on the roof. If anything else, I don't know what we're doing about the wall, things like that. Engineering, just stuff in general to spend that money to-
It seemed like the engineering services were high relative to the full year, the full fiscal year. I can't remember what it was, but it's, it seemed percentage-wise to be high.
The engineering line is a new line item that we started charging, so-
For P and D, right?
I've been putting money in as we go, when we do a proposal and they give us a cost.
Yep.
So one of their engineering tasks is already complete for the year, so that might be like a seasonal issue.
Okay, so what it was originally was 6,500. This is the engineering architect contractual, was 6,500, it was amended to 15,500. And we have month-to-date expenditures is 62, sorry, year-to-date expenditures is 11,500. So we've got, as it turns out, 39, $4,000 left, and considering the fact that we're not even halfway through the year.
So this line is going to be moving up as we move with-
Yep.
As we move on projects. Some projects are a finite number when we sign the contract, others are consulting, like the attorneys, as they go hourly.
Yep.
So this number, until we have a year or two to understand how much an engineer is really going to cost, and if we don't know all the projects upfront, I couldn't front-load that budget. But there is money from the fund balance to pay for the engineering services, because it goes along with part of paying to get the firehouse repairs done, you need to pay the engineer as well.
The other one was, and this is, we're significantly under-expended in terms of attorney's fees.
Yes.
Hence, I believe the last bill that we got was as of end of, end of September, I don't think we've gotten a bill for end of October.
We have not gotten one for October.
And we, we, I need it for that code update to try to determine where we are. We would like to be able to submit a request for reimbursement for the third phase, which has been submitted, and NYSERTA last week said that they would try to expedite that because they have a policy of prompt processing. But we would like to be able to submit number four and number five, but we can't do that. The bulk of our expenses are going to be CMMR, so if you could get in touch with CMMR and ask them to send us, if not an actual itemized bill, an estimate, and specifically what, what is John charging the code update committee for the month of October and the month of November thus far? I'm assuming it's going to be a big number, but I have no idea. So that would help.
And that's also why that number's low. So June, we hardly used the attorneys at all, and then July and August, a big chunk of it was towards the code update committee, so that's not in the attorney line. So that's also why the attorney bills seem a little smaller on that line.
Okay. But if you could nudge them along a bit, that would be helpful. Michelle, we, we see the bills for Main Street yet?
No.
Yeah, they'll go through chips as soon as they come in.
Any other questions?
Nope. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
The mural painter is up next, but there's only a few here, so we'll wait. It's not even 7:30.
It's 7:30, right?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll jump around.
He's coming from Puff Alley, so.
No problem. We can do, we'll go to number four, approval, recommendation, new member of tree advisory board, Taro Itaka, I don't know if I pronounced that right, is replacing Gordon Robertson. An impressive resume, person's certified arborist, certified pesticide technician, Lower Hudson Valley Partnership, regional invasive species management steering committee member, past, you know, Connecticut Westchester Mycological Association, and former chair of Putnam Valley Commission for the Conservation of the Environment, along with all of that list. So I know I talked to Jen, she was very excited about having Taro come aboard, so I'll make the, make mention to have Taro join the TAB to replace Gordon Robertson.
Second?
Any further discussion, who in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, and welcome. Old business, so, sorry, I'll have a discussion on, I don't know if these do any good, they weren't prescribed by my doctor, but I, discussion on Lime, we got a little kind of, we'll go with the actual, coffee leaves. So the discussion on Lime Energy was that Marie was wanting to move ahead with, you know, after talking to our highway crew chief about lighting in the garage, which sparked me remembering a conversation I had with our highway chief, which was kind of conflicting. So we put a hold on that, and then talked to Bugsy about this. And so kind of where we're at or what they have down there is, there are a number of fixtures, which are just the bulbs, I believe, or maybe there's part of the fixtures that are out, that are hard to reach. So the Lime proposal was for $5,000 and, which was put on hold. And so we didn't think, so I was asking, I asked Bugsy whether it was worth, you know, what we're up against, is this just changing some bulbs and, or are we going to spend $5,000 because of lighting support? So it seems like, and then Marie heard after him, and now Lime is kind of with the run?
No, sorry, what you said is correct, we've been getting conflicting information. In addition, Steve is putting on, the panels, the roof panels are translucent somewhat, and so they admit, they admit light somewhat. And the problem is in the bays, the problem is not in, the lighting problem is only in the bays, it's not in the other rooms at the highway garage. There are 12 hanging lights, hanging fixtures, six to seven of them are working. Six work most of the time, the seventh one sort of works intermittently. The Lime proposal is to replace all fixtures at the highway garage. Two LED fixtures install the lights in them, and the cost is $5,000. So the question, according to Bugsy, they can replace the bulbs in the lights while using a front end loader and a ladder, and that will light from those fixtures, which does not seem like what we would-
No, you can't.
Want to suggest to him to do. But what he said was, after the conversation with you, that he's going to get in touch with the tower to change the six slash seven failing lights.
Replace the lights or just check the bulbs?
Check the ballers, the ballards and the bulbs. B, B, B.
Three B lighting.
I seem to remember, and I don't, yeah, I seem to remember that the Padala quote was high.
Or replacing the LEDs at one time, replacing the fixtures.
I'm looking back to see if I can find what had come up originally. And I can't remember whatever it was.
So is, well, where we're at now with Lime is that we can't take advantage of that or we can't?
Well-
Depending on what?
They have limited funds left. Everything has to be completed by the end of December. I sent them an email today saying, because of the conversation I had, thank you very much, but we're not going to do it.
Okay.
But I can, I have no problem going back and saying, I was wrong, we need to do it.
I just don't know what, you know, Bugsy, what the cost is, what he thinks if it's just bulbs are, do we want to invest the 5,000?
We have to get a lift to get at the bulbs and everything.
What he said is you'd have Padala to get up there, you know, he'd have to take up-
Yeah, it's not a lift.
And then we don't know the shape of the fixtures that are up there. I mean, it may, once he gets up there, it may be that they're old and they, they don't work anymore. Whereas if we go with Lime, they're going to change all the fixtures, and it's over and done.
Well, it might be hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars.
No, it's not going to be hundreds.
Nothing's hundreds.
I don't know. I mean, what's everyone else think? I, I don't know what-
We have a question, Lime is 5K. It's 5K.
Well, if they're down there with a crew-
That's the entire building.
If the dollars are all day with their lift and crew, even if this is one day, there's, that's probably 1,500 plus with the labor and adding what they can place or whatever.
So you're advocating for changing it?
Just get it done, you save energy over time.
Fran, it seems like that's where you're at. That's where you're at.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And we'll save like this, which is fine.
Yes.
So who's going to get in touch with Padala?
Padala, no, we're advocating on-
Padala for.
I'm sorry, we were talking about having Padala come in and-
No, that wasn't what I was asking.
Was that just a thought or?
I was advocating, um, Lime.
Yeah, I was advocating going to Lime. Yeah, exactly. I didn't, I wanted to have the conversation so we could clear up what Bugsy was talking about, which we still haven't cleared up.
Right, right.
So Steve feels like it's worth it, whatever, it's going to be, if Padala comes down here, it's going to cost us 1,500 or more just for his labor, so he's advocating to go to Lime. Fran is advocating for Lime.
I like Lime too.
Okay, so we have a, we have a- Okay, so we have a we have a majority for lunch. We'd like to go to line, so if you'd like to call them.
I, okay.
And if not, then we'll go to plan B.
I'll call them back. And here's, here's a note from Fred today. Sorry to hear that. That you don't wanna do it. And so it's gonna change, change my mind yet again.
Sorry about that.
We're all, we can.
So we need a resolution.
And we need her.
It's in there.
Oh, it is. Okay, so we'll go to uh resolution number twenty-eight dash two thousand nineteen, authorizing bill to sign energy efficiency proposal with Lyme. I'll make a motion of, yes, I'll make the motion to uh to implement authorization to sign with Lyme if still available.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Trustee Hurley?
You gotta be kidding me. Yes.
That's not, yeah, it's not one of the appropriate.
You're sure?
I'm I'm texting him right now.
Trustee Miller?
We've changed our minds. Yeah, did it again.
Uh, trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Valado?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandi?
Uh, yes. Thank you. No, I did not find it. I couldn't even find it. Marie or Fran did.
Cause we need to get that to him.
Yeah.
Not the resolution, the line. Is the line agreement in here?
Yes.
If it's not, it's in the.
Which one? Good God, or where's the signature?
Oh, I can sign it. Don't worry, I'll sign it.
You can sign it?
Yeah, I signed the other one.
Participating customer, is that the signature?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, we can get to the highlight of the evening. So uh is do, should we wait a little longer? Is everyone here, you think will be here? I don't wanna.
Finish up these last two.
Okay.
I know.
Uh, do you want to approve the bills, Pat?
Yep.
Five, three, seven, four.
I'm not quite done. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
And there are a couple that Marine needs to.
All right. Uh, we'll just go to, we'll just wait a few more minutes and kill one more of these. Approval of minutes eleven, twelve, nineteen. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
So are we good?
Yeah.
Yes? So as we all know, the uh after, I don't know how long, a couple of years, uh, having a couple of years of planning and trying to get stuff all organized. The group in front of us uh finally, I shouldn't say finally, meaning, you know, it's like exhausting. But um, the uh the tunnel or the subway, whatever you like to call it, was was a mural was painted, which uh was was really, it just was received so well in the uh in the village that I I thought we should really acknowledge everyone for it. It was one of the most positive things since I've been here. And if you're a Facebook person, I think it had over three hundred hits. There are people that had commented and fifty, actually more than fifty commented and there were like over three hundred that, you know, liked or loved or whatever. And I've just heard, you know, more and more, you know, people, how how much they appreciate that and why wasn't it done before? And it it just looks really great and you guys did a super job. Um, and it's been, it was, it's been really received, like I said, it was received really well by the village and appreciated. And I think it's actually ignited a little more enthusiasm for doing some things in the village. I think there's a, you know, the glow was last year, um, lighting up on Main Street. Um, and I think this this year, there's more movement on on uh putting more lights and getting the uh the uh different merchants involved and lighting up and getting Main Street a little more festive. Um, I know there was a bike rack that has been ready to be installed by another small group. So, you know, a lot of things come from these and uh it's it's totally appreciated. I think everyone would agree on the board here. Um, and anyone can chime in, but uh, so I asked you all here tonight um to to thank you. Um, it's great. Uh, it's uh, I'd love it when people are participating and making things better. Who wouldn't? And uh, and I think, like I said, it's really kind of ignited a little more energy in the village. So I'm very happy and really thankful that we kept kept at it and you kept at it and it turned out really, really well. Probably better than I expected, actually. I think it really, really does look great. So thank you so much. And Heidi or or Green, if you guys wanna comment on on the process or who was involved or whoever would like to, um, please do.
It's, it thanks for the support of the board and the village as well, but the school's been phenomenal. And it's just funny when you take something that starts off as a little idea at seven thirty in the morning two years ago and just like, oh, yeah, good idea, you know, as you're doing a million things at once. And the good idea really came to fruition. And it's a testament to our little family that we've become, sitting in front of us like the most unlikely people. You just don't know who's gonna show up that morning. And not only did they show up that morning, but they showed up tonight. It's, we're a little family now. And I feel like as our little family, we can conquer many, many things together. So thank you guys very much. It means.
Get that all together and actually.
The design was like two years ago from our current tenth grade students. And which is another testament to these days because they didn't have anything to do with the planning part of it or the design. But they were more than happy to pick it up and run with it and make it happen and give their time to do that, so. Yeah. Did you have fun painting it?
Yeah.
Was it fun?
It was hard.
Absolutely stand up.
Yeah. For me, one of um the tunnel is always scary. And it was different from Cold Spring. This Cold Spring was really a bright place and like a happy, like almost magical place with some from Chile. So like this is my home. And um, so I wanted uh the tunnel to also fit in with um Cold Spring. So I thought that um this was a great project and I love that we all contribute. And it was, it was so fun because um I at least I know that I became really friends with everyone and um I really enjoyed doing it, so. Thank you for letting us do this.
Thank you. Also wanna thank Heidi. I know when we're we're talking about this and starting up and talking and I I come up with the negative kind of sides of things. So she endured that, you know, like, well, what kind of pain? Is it gonna stick? It's really wet down there. It's cold. It's when are we gonna do this? And and all those things and and it was all worked out. And again, you know, great. So thank you for the whole process and and working with us on it and and doing it.
Mr. Mayor.
I have, well, what's that?
I just wondered at some point if we could have all the kids across the front row, all the students and their teacher for a picture.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
No offense to the three adults in the front row.
The adults are also involved.
That's true.
You wanna do it now? You wanna do it now?
Um, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it now. And then we'll take a, we'll take a short break. Uh, I made some cupcakes today. We have some sodas, so. If you're, there's uh chocolate ones that are gluten free, just in case.
You made them?
I made them, so the one for you might not be good. Also some sodas. Um, and also we have uh T-shirts that are left uh from our Fourth of July, which are really nice T-shirts. And we like to, if you guys are interested, have them over on the side. I think there's enough for everyone. So if you'd like to have a T-shirt, we'd love for you to have them. Really nice T-shirt. You want them anywhere special, Mike, or you want?
Just as much as possible, maybe in one row on the front.
Give me, yeah. You wanna come up here? Yeah, move back, move back a little bit. I don't think he's in a, towards it. Couple people can sit in the chairs. There you go. We need one more person in the chair there. We're good.
Everybody say uh tunnel.
Hey, I'll let you open over right over there. I think it'll get closer.
Yeah.
There we go.
What are you gonna say, tunnel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. These are small Indian shirts and uh they were designed for Fourth of July. We have bunches of. We also have large to take for small. Help yourself.
Nah, we're staying here. Kids are coming up on Thursday. One is in uh Allentown, uh one is in uh.
For a while, this was trending, I bet. And there was some guy exhorting other patriots, quote unquote, armed patriots to come to the cemetery. So I seen there were already fifteen seventy-five patriots there. Now, I wrote about this. And police went to a red house.
Kinda looked like suicide like that.
The same conspiracy theories that Alex Jones got. Sandy. I know. How can you be so noble? I mean, no one who actually lives in New York raised a nine eleven was a hoax. No one. Not a single person. It made on the state.
She leaves her stuff already with. And like I said, she's like, that's why I think she does deserve pedals. She definitely deserves pedals.
Have you, have Thanksgiving, by the way? Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Did you know, you take a ketchup, it's like a little cup of, like, vinegar. You take, so, so it's like, the paper is curled, so you unfold it and unfold it, and you put, use more ketchup. But it's sort of, it's sort of messy.
Well, if you don't push them all the way.
You should have asked without, like, you know.
A mess.
That's strange.
Thank you. You're welcome, take care.
And then I like, mega duct, and then it's getting in my hair.
Do you see tear?
Wow, cupcakes, that's a lot left there.
I'd like to take a few home.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give it to them right in bed, so they can get one.
Oh, yuck. It's nice that she painted.
We ready, Michael?
Yeah.
We're all...
We just have, we have one more item, which is the approval of a bill, uh, batch five three seven four.
Yes, I moved to approve batch five three seven four for a total amount of forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else on the...
The approval of the minutes, we did that.
We did that.
We did that, I missed that.
Yes, we did. Um, just a, a comment on the water. The, uh, so where we're at, there were, there were a number of complaints, more than usual, and, you know, from people that usually don't complain about the discoloration of water. Most of them was on the, on the eastern side of the village, on the uphill side, and Nelsonville residents, a few, and, uh, like Parrish Street and, uh, in that area, so, um, so part, part of the problem is that, uh, first of all, we didn't have enough rain in the, uh, in the reservoir, so usually, um, what solves this problem is, is flushing the hydrants, but since we didn't have enough water going into the winter, didn't know if it was gonna rain, uh, we, we held off on that. So, uh, Matt Krueg was able to flush, low flush, uh, pressure flush, the upper area, um, last week, or, or this week, one, recently, and, uh, and it seems to have cleared up most of the problems, I don't think there's been complaints since. Um, he has been going, whenever anyone calls or has a complaint, he has, has gone to their, uh, to their homes and has tested, uh, the water for them, a number of places, by the time he gets there, the water's clear, so, uh, he doesn't test it. I believe today that someone, uh, from Putnam County came over to also, uh, to, to look at what was going on and, and see how, uh, you know, Matt was handling it, and I think they're doing some, some tests on the water also. If anyone needs more specifics, you'll have to talk to Matt on, on that, I'm not sure exactly what they were doing. But I guess they were called in by our friends in Nelsonville, Mayor Bowman, uh, called the, uh, Putnam County, to have them come over, so they did come over today, and, uh, Matt, uh, showed them what we're doing and the procedures that he's been, and what we've been dealing with, as far as the issue. So, uh, it seems like things have cleared up, um, they didn't recommend flushing anymore, both Matt and, uh, and, uh, the person, the rep from, uh, Putnam County, um, and then also going into the holidays, if they did a, a serious flush, it would mean four days or whatever of, of worse water, usually the sediment's all kicked up by then and didn't want to have that happen for the holidays, so they held off on that. Uh, one of the other things is, going into the winter, is if you're flushing, you have to worry about it freezing, and that's something Matt was dealing with before, we had this little warm snap today, so, so it seems like, uh, the flushing has worked, hopefully it has, um, if not, you know, we're continuing to look at everything, and I believe that Matt, that, uh, that meter or gauge that, uh, we approved, I think that he has that now, as far as the coagulants or how that works also, something you can talk to Matt about, um, but, um, that, that he said will help identify, um, when a problem, um, arises, maybe a little ahead of time, so we can get in front of it, but there have been a number of, of people complaining, um, it's basically because of the sediment in the, uh, in the, in the old pipes, and, uh, we weren't able to flush, so, um, hopefully that's where we're at now, just wanted to let everyone know, uh, we'll keep following up on that and, uh, see if there's any more complaints, um, but it seems to have done the trick.
There were, um, I had posted last week, I think, part of Matt's report, from his monthly report, uh, which raised some questions, which I sent back to Matt, and he answered them, so that got posted on the village Facebook page today. It's a very long answer, but he answered the questions.
That was a really good explanation in like Instagrams.
Yeah, he tried his best, and it took him, you know, he's been busy, and I, you know, it took him a few days to get it through, but he, he has a good explanation, so that helps.
Uh, one other item, I think we should talk about, just quickly, um, is, um, is the, uh, permits for the, uh, for the parking, for, for the parking lot, for the municipal parking lot. We had, uh, we had initial discussions on this, and Marie had done a lot of work on all the data and collecting it, and the idea was that, you know, after we've had so many, we, we've had a number of years to collect data, that we could see if we could offer free parking, or, or parking at a cost, whatever, to the residents, uh, to, for the winter parking. Originally, I think we were talking about, the, the beginning of the discussion was to do a year round, I believe, right? It was year round, and we were gonna, and it was good between six and...
Six PM until eight AM, or something like that.
Right.
I think, you know, it was around nine o'clock, I think.
Yeah, I think nine, and it was, uh, but it was a year round, and, uh, so in the discussion, after we had this information, I asked Marie to go back, and, which she did again, and, uh, and we looked at the data, and I said, well, can we, can we find space for them, for some of the park, twenty-four seven, so they didn't have to move in the morning, only if it's gonna snow or whatever, and so she did that, and we came up with a, that we, we'd be able to offer nineteen parking spots. Now, this is just for the village, it's not to, like, any area of the village, it's municipal lot, it's gonna be offered to the village. So, in that discussion, we, we decided to be nineteen, we would have a lottery, and it would be, it, it turned out to be like ten dollars a month, um, which kind of takes care of the money, you know, we projected losing, uh, by the parking lot, it included permit stickers that we purchased, and included ads to both newspapers, um, so it wasn't like we were trying to, uh, to take advantage of anyone, um, there were accusations in the papers, um, two letters were written, and basically, one was stating that we did this as a ploy for, uh, to gain favor from residents, so that we could get elected again, which couldn't be farther from, from the truth, um, unless Marie had something up her sleeve that I don't know about.
Wasn't I.
So, um, so where, so it, so I think one of the questions is, how did it start from three dollars and go to forty dollars? And that's how it happened, the initial discussions were for a year long, it was for, for nighttime parking, um, what we did is, we extended the, you can still, there's still free parking at the municipal lot, and it's from six o'clock, is it six or nine?
Nine.
From nine o'clock till ten in the morning, we extended the, uh, the time you had to leave to ten in the morning, so people can park there if they would like, which is a better deal than three dollars, you know?
The initial...
The initial offering.
The initial offering was only Monday through Friday, too, it was not weekends, because I, I went back and listened to, to, watched the videos on both of those meetings, because I was like, what?
Well, initially, all we looked at was weekdays.
Initially, we looked at Monday through Friday, and it was nights only.
Right, yeah.
So it was just a couple of hours at night, and then we offered twenty-four seven.
So, the permits are still available, um, I don't know, we haven't had a real, a big, big response on it, so if anyone's interested, and, uh, they're, they're still available, it, it turns out to be like ten dollars a month for the, to be able to park there twenty-four seven, if there's a snowstorm, you'd have to move out, and then you'd have someone come and plow your area for you, so I think it's a pretty good deal. Thank you, Marie, for all your work on this, when you got, when you got a couple of, uh, those letters, they kind of aggravate you a bit, because accusations of trying to swing an election and other things, unfounded, so, that's about it. Anyone else have anything else? Sorry to drag you down for a few more minutes, I know Marie's excited about, look at her, come on. So, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marie.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
It was aye, you won by nineteen votes, though, you know?